Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Special recognitions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to live.
Thank you, sir. We have a proclamation that where as the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration and was initially created by George Washington in 1782 as the badge of military merit and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award made available to the common soldier and is awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with enemy of the United States. And whereas the Purple Heart signifies the sacrifices made by many generations of American citizen soldiers and is a symbol of their willingness to sacrifice all to protect and defend our great country. And whereas the Purple Heart Medal is one of the most recognized military awards and is the one military honor awarded to many but desired by few, now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim the City of Sioux City as a Purple Heart City in Sioux City. I want to present this to you guys and thank all of you for your service. So, thank you very much and say a few words.
I'd like to say a few words. Can you step over here? We have a picture taken.
Okay, you bet we can. You know how to get it to him, ma'am? All right, thank you.
Don't go away.
On behalf of the Clog D. Stansberry, Chapter 66, Military Order of the Purple Heart,
the Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the City of Sioux City and Mayor Bob Scott for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming the Purple Heart City, presented by the patriot members, the Department of Iowa Military Order of the Purple Heart.
We will hang this in City Hall with a flower of pride. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we will go to Environmental Advisory Board, Grace Perrin. Grace, you want to come up and tell us why you want to continue?
Hi, I'm Grace Perrin. As most of you know, I have loved my position on the board for the past three years and just being able to grow and change with new leadership and new people joining in each year. It's been really exciting and I think we've been able to do things that we haven't so far. And I think these are new things that are going to push Sioux City into a more environmentally conscious and sustainable atmosphere. I think that we have done a lot of new things and we've introduced people to a lot of new options and things that they can use throughout the city while still retaining like the re-event, entire take-back event and things like that. And it's been a really fun past three years and I'd like to continue with what we have been doing. I really appreciate everything that everyone here, especially you guys, have done for us and everyone in the crowd as well and every Sioux City citizen who stops by and takes time to talk to us and kind of get to know what we are and what we do.
Rain gauges are the best ever.
Yeah, I get that a lot. Rain gauges, ponchos, things like that. People love them. And I'm glad that we have the options to give them out to people because that just spreads awareness so much, so much easier and so much more efficiently.
Well, Grace, you do a great job and I really appreciate all that you do, not only for the committee but for the community. And I just wish we had, you know, the dedication of everyone in the community that you have, not only in this community but just making a difference. So, thank you so much for being a leader and a role model.
Thank you.
Thank you for your enthusiasm.
Jim Stevenson. Bring that same enthusiasm now, Jim.
Yeah.
See it.
Hello, everyone. What a great shiny day outside. I'm here just to renew on Parks and Recs and to be honest with you, I've enjoyed it. It's been a learning experience and I'm just glad to be a part of it and I think they accomplished some things while I was there, not because of me but just simply because team effort. So, if you'll have me, I'll renew for another year or whatever the term is.
Good.
Sounds good, Jim. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Appreciate it. We'll go to the consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 15H. Consider these items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it and state your name for the record. You no longer have to state your address. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up at the end of the meeting under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the November 4 City Council minutes. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of October 22. Five is a resolution approving the IDOT Street Finance Report. Six is a resolution accepting the donation from the Sioux City Public Library Foundation for specialist salary, hotspot connectivity for public circulation and other projects. Seven is a motion appointing Karina Pedroza to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Eight, Items 8E are motions approving annual reports. A is the Arts Center Board of Trustees. B is the Building and Housing Code Board. C is the Historic Preservation Commission. D is the Senior Advisory Committee. And E is the Waste Water Treatment Plant Reconstruction and Design Advisory Committee. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a change order number two for the contract with the Sioux City Engineering for the annual storm inlet repair project. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Vemster &amp; Kim for the annual bridge inspection project. C is a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the Consulting Services Agreement with McClure Engineering for the Skywalk Assessment Study Project. D is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the 4812, 46th Street Regional Storm Water Detention Preliminary Design Project. E is a resolution approving a payment agreement with the Sioux Land Youth, Payment Agreement with the Sioux Land Youth Hockey Association for the IBP Ice Center Locker Room Edition Project. F is a resolution approving a contract to Christensen Commercial Contracting for the Digestion and High Strength Waste Receiving Improvement Project. G is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Specialty Tree Service for the tree removal project. I need to abstain, I furnish a bond conflict of interest. H is a resolution approving a service agreement and general release. I is a resolution approving an intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement with IDHS. J is a resolution approving change order number four to the contract with RP Constructors for the Aviation Center Site Improvements Project at the airport. K1 is a resolution approving a contract to Subserco for the Sidewalk Assessment Program Project. I need to abstain conflict of interest, furnish the bond. K2 is a resolution approving a contract to Subserco for the Gordon Drive Storm Sewer Repair Project. I need to abstain conflict of interest, I furnish a bond. Tanner Actions Relating to Personnel. A is a resolution suspending the requirements of the Iowa Code for the hiring of the employees of the water treatment plant, the Underground Utilities Department, the Economic and Community Development for a period of one year. I quite frankly don't understand what job in the Community Development Department can't work. Wade, I don't quite understand in the Underground Utility Department what job can't wait that we have to rush it. So, can somebody please enlighten me as to why? I didn't say water treatment plant, but utility, okay, utilities.
Brad Pitt, Utilities Director. With the difficulties that we've had with hiring employees, our last list consisted of three applicants. The first applicant did not want to work second or third shift. We hired the next two employees off of the list, knowing that they may not make it through their probationary period and they did not. So, we're behind. We're down three employees right now. We're unable to get employees on the list and we'd rather not hire those that we don't feel are going to make it through the probationary time because we're spending a lot of time in training, getting those employees ready just to turn around and re-advertise.
So, you, all you're doing is not having civil service certify the list, but you still have a list that you have to work off, don't you?
We will have a pool of applicants and we will be very diligent.
You have to exhaust that, so you're still going to have probationary problems. Am I wrong?
Chanel Bertrand, Human Resources Director. I think the issue that they're having is they get a list with very few names. They interview all names on the list. People may not choose to take the job. The other names remaining on the list, management is not interested based on an interview. However, because they have to currently exhaust the list before we can re-advertise, they are hiring them and we're ending up terminating them within their probationary period, knowing that we wouldn't have hired them to begin with. But in order to advertise, we have to exhaust a list.
How does this change that?
Amber Hegarty, Assistant City Attorney. So, the way the new law is written is we don't have to do a list. There's still civil service, they still have to be tested, but those who pass the test, that group of names is just provided to the department. And they do not have to hire from that group if they choose not to, if they aren't comfortable with any of them after the interview process, or they can hire from them. If they don't like that pool, they can re-advertise, retest and get a.
This is really the beginning of, you can tell me it isn't, but it is. It's the beginning of doing away with a civil service list, which is kind of one of the things that.
And I can tell you that as.
We're starting to act like other. It concerns me.
And I advise the Civil Service Commission and I can tell you, even though they're not here today, because I don't believe that they were aware these two items were on the agenda today, the last time they informed council, they were not in support of this. So, that's what I've let the departments know, is I know that the Commission is not in support of suspending.
Well, I don't know why you just don't do every dang job around here because that's what you want to do, which is a real concern for me. I mean, who are you trying to hire, Marty, that you?
The position we're looking at is the, sorry, Marty Doherty, Economic and Community Development, an entry-level economic development specialist position that's been vacant for a while and we had some difficulty finding somebody before and I think for all the reasons that they said, I think.
Have you advertised? Have you advertised?
We did before. We were pending this action here. We would advertise again.
Because I would just say I understand some of the frustrations. I remember when this position first became available and I was talking to a few different applicants or people that were interested and whether some of them worked out or weren't able to apply or didn't end up applying and then I know an offer was made and then that person accepted but then had to reneg on that acceptance and that was kind of frustrating. It was just one of those, we're then going back to the list and you have to exhaust it even if you don't feel that they're a good fit for the job or going to be able to perform the duties. And while I want our workers to have protections, while I believe in the Civil Service Commission and their ability to screen through and have quality applicants and have some protections for those individuals, what I'm hearing from staff, and I guess I know much more about their position Renee and Marty have versus Brad's, but I think that at least in that instance, you're then sitting and waiting for a new list. You're waiting an entire year rather than going out and hiring who you feel may be a better applicant or someone that's interested in the job. But because you are not wanting to necessarily exhaust all possibilities because you've interviewed and you don't feel that they will be a good fit for one reason or another, it causes severe delays and that puts the city behind. And that's what I find most frustrating, I guess.
You know, the reason behind civil service was so that you didn't get to pick your friends and hire them without proper process. And that's what I fear most. Real concern for me that, I'm not picking on you, but because you may not like an applicant, we're not going to hire him, but in this new system, we'll get to pick who we want to hire and that.
There will need to be at least an attempt to contact for an interview. I'm not just going to let them repost a position if they get a list of names, glance over it and say, "I don't like any of these." They're going to have to show that they at least interviewed the people and tell me why none of the names on the list would be a good candidate for the organization.
I was going to say, I worry about nepotism too, Mayor, or nepotism or just hiring of friends, but I guess I have quite a bit of faith in city staff and trust that, at least what I've witnessed in City Hall since being here, I haven't seen that, but I know in years past, that's been a concern, but.
This is a one-year suspension.
Yeah, we can.
What, how many times have we done this before? It's been before.
Twice.
Twice before. And those were one-year suspensions?
Was it successful?
And those one-year, and those one-year periods have passed?
No.
We're still within?
It'd be one year for just these.
No, I understand that, but the other, the other two where we suspended.
That was just in.
That was just in August, so, so they automatically, after one year, they automatically go, the suspension goes away.
Right.
They have a right to come back for one more year, don't you?
It's year increments.
What's that?
It's year increments.
Yes, you have a right to come back.
Yes.
They'd have to come back for.
And it was in July, I believe, was the first one and the second one was, I think, August.
So, I think this situation that you're finding yourselves in, I think this is a good way to address it as long as it's short-term. And we will have results of who's hired and whether there is going to be that abuse that you are concerned about.
I voted no last time, so I'll vote no again.
Well, I know, I mean, I could never convince you otherwise. But I'm just, I'm just looking at the logic of it.
Right.
I don't know why you don't come with, because all's I hear is how hard it is to hire people and why don't you just do everybody?
I was told that that wouldn't be favorably looked upon.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't be favorably looked.
Coming as we can.
So, we'll just do them one at a time till we get there.
Coming as we can. If you prefer.
That's exactly what we're doing, too.
You're coming with the more difficult cases.
I bring a blanket, I would be more than happy to bring a blanket with all city departments.
We just, well, you probably have the vote.
Do you feel like they're all struggling the same?
I think there's some of the, yes. I mean, no one wants to be handcuffed to a list with some applicants that are not most desirable. Sometimes you get a list that has 20 names, which is different than someone like Brad and Marty who get a smaller list with four and five names. You have two people drop off, you know, maybe someone goes somewhere else, so now you're stuck with two to three people you interview and they're not what you're looking for. I think Brad terminated two in the probationary period. And sometimes it's to the point where, why even interview because I have one name left and I have to hire him if I want to continue with the next, I have four vacancies. So, it's a lot of time to train people and we invest money when we have to train them for commercial driver's license, so we just want to get the best people and not have to delay and.
But normally, when you go into a job hire with a attitude that these two are not going to make, I guess what? They don't make it. Because a lot of it's reflective of how we hire, too. And we got to be careful with that.
I agree with that point.
I vote no.
So.
You want to pull it? Yeah, I'll pull it.
Well, just one moment. So, we will have measured results for all three of these when their year's time is up.
I'm sorry, what?
We will have measured results from the last, this will be the third time that we do this.
Fourth. Well, it'll be, two departments are already approved and then these two.
Police, fire.
Four total departments.
Okay, but there are, we will have some measured results at the end of each one's year.
We keep track of all the employees that we interview and what they do, whether they transfer, they're still hired, or whether they're terminated.
So, just so we can see how well this is working, that's all I'm asking.
Do we have any?
I think it's a great idea.
I'm with the mayor on this one. I'm not comfortable with it. But do we have any short-term data from police or fire about their hiring efforts and whether or not this has changed anything or curbed the effort?
Sure. Fire is not one of the departments. It's police and utilities. We can get that data for you. And if the council wishes during this one-year period, if you choose to waive it, you can withdraw that or rescind it if you feel it's not working.
Okay, call the roll, please.
O'Kane?
No.
Shaner?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. B is a resolution amending an authorized personnel complement by approving an updated job description for the wastewater treatment plant manager and reclassifying one full-time pre-treatment coordinator wastewater treatment plant manager. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving change order number one and authorizing payment to Concrete Plus for the fire station parking lot repair project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Barclay Asphalt for 6121 Pershing Street Parking Lot Overlay Project. I have been questioned if I have a conflict with Barclay Asphalt. I have do, I hired Barclay to do work for me. I don't think that creates a conflict. I had to write him a check, so I don't see that I have one. C is a motion approving total expenses for October. D is a resolution approving fund transfers to October. Twelve are actions relating to purchasing. A is a resolution authorizing the purchase of ambulance property and liability insurance for Mills, Shellhammer, Pits and Associates. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to tenant sales and service for one tenant scrubber and sweeper machine. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to ARI Phoenix for six cordless mobile lift systems. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sunset Law Enforcement for ammunition for the police department. E is a resolution awarding purchase order to Kaiser Police Supply for ammunition for the police department. F is a resolution amending a purchase order with McQueen Equipment for Equipment Substitutes for the, a combination sewer cleaner. G is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Stryker Sales for 20 defibrillator units and eight modems. Thirteen are applications for beer, cigarette, I'm sorry, for cigarette, tobacco and nicotine vapor permits. Fourteen is the applications for beer and liquor license. Fifteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll vote. Passes 5016 is a recommendation from planning and zoning, resolution approving the final plat for Red Fox Run Edition Property at 1315 46th Street and 4422 Cheyenne Boulevard. The petitioner is McClure Engineering, Rhonda Wazinski, revocable trust Scott and Deborah Keel. Move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Seeing none. Passes 5017 is a hearing in ordinance rezoning 613 Cook Street. Petitioners CTS Builders and Bear Properties, I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard?
Good evening, counsel. Bo Bronger, do you need my address?
No. Nope, not anymore.
Okay, just here to answer any questions on 613 Cook Street.
So, that's right, right by Yummy Blocks.
Yes.
Right?
Just right behind it there.
So, there's a lot of kids and families and stuff like that that are, that are in the area. The only thing that I would ask is that when you, because I know you're still kind of settling on a site design, that you can take that into consideration as far as like traffic and what that might look like.
Of course.
Which I know you will, but, and that was my only thing that I had.
Who are the principals of this?
Bear Properties is the deed holder right now and then I would be partnering with that developer as well.
That's the developer I am familiar with then, right?
That you're familiar with?
Bear Properties is the developer?
Bear Properties is the owner of Bernie's Lawn and Garden, Colby Bearing.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure I don't have a conflict.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm checking, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bo.
Anyone else be heard? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Passes 50, is anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule? I'll move that.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Hearing in ordinance, 18 is a hearing in ordinance amending Chapter 25.05 Site Development in Municipal Code to repeal the interim automobile sales and rental and service ordinance. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard?
Wade, I had some questions.
Which will claim?
Wade, I appreciated you bringing this forward and it's probably just because of the timeline, you know, would, would suggest that we needed to either have the discussion to continue this or to let it lapse, but I just wanted to get your opinion on what you've seen, what has staff seen, what have they heard? I think we have, as we analyzed before, an exorbitant amount of these used car dealerships popping up in different locations as far as, that really just, I mean, lead to a lot of not only unsightly projects but also things that are maybe unsafe due to fire or access. Just wanted to get your opinion on, have you seen a lot of pushbacks, a lot of requests? What kind of has been our analysis before? Because quite frankly, I'm not prepared to take a hard stance necessarily like South Sioux City did and just limit this to where, you know, they're no longer necessarily welcome. But I'm not so inclined to think that we need more than we currently have either. So, I guess, what, what have you heard one way or another?
I, well, so, kind of go back. We went out this fall with Arizona Inspector Ron Cuny. And we visited all the sites. Additionally, we have had, and then sent letters to the ones that were in violation.
In violation or different things, yeah.
We have had positive discussions with some of the people that did have violations that needed to be addressed. They are, some of them are in the process of working through there. We are in the process of going out and doing those re-inspections and looking at whether we actually need to start opening cases and working on.
Closing some or doing something, yeah. Taking action.
Yes. Over the course of the summer, we did have eight inquiries of different locations that would potentially go into some various parts of town. The zoning, at least for sure, in most of those cases would keep them out. The lot size would also limit that, too. So, it's just, I think this, I believe it'll work, but we do have, here in the last two weeks, we've had two that have come in. One is going to go ahead and do all the landscaping requirements and does meet their, because they're existing.
Size requirements, everything else.
And there's one that is appealing to P&amp;Z.
I have a question. We talked about one, but I still don't understand. You said that you got their address not because they were an auto repair business but because they were a dealer.
Yeah, so.
But they haven't had a dealer's license for?
So, we went back and checked. I know our intern put together the maps this summer because this was kind of a, this is a fairly large project. And I think that was like a misstep and I did go back and check and that one was revoked at the time, but yeah, so we've worked through that.
So, they can't have a dealer's license now anymore then?
So, the way I've been told by the Iowa DOT that that all works is that the DOT will leave the dealer or that has had a license in the past on the list in the instance that they would come back around for, in this case, it was the. they would come back around for, in this case, it was the bond issue. And so that would be why that would have been on the, what they refer to as a revoked portion of that list.
But, no, that's not what I'm asking you. If they wanted to get a dealer's license tomorrow because they no longer qualify with your new standards, they're not going to be able to.
So they exist, they wouldn't be able to get a dealer's license?
Not trying to throw you off, I'm asking this question because I don't understand what we're doing here.
We're, we're just taking the moratorium language that we put in place back in the end of May, early June, out of the code.
Right, they don't have a large enough lot size.
They wouldn't have the large enough lot size, but, yeah, so the lot size would be the limitation in that case, and so that, yeah, it wouldn't be allowed at that point in time.
Because the moratorium was saying, look, it doesn't matter about all the other requirements, it's not allowing anyone to move forward. And if we let this lapse and take it away, then it falls back to all those other stipulations.
Stand up, but they went out and said this guy qualified for a license, so I called him and said, so if he gets a bond, can he get a license again? And I don't think he can, but Wade thought he could. That's why I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, okay.
Because he wants to know.
Yeah, because the way, when, when that went through, I thought we had hit all the licensed ones, but there's a revoked portion of that list, and it got tossed in accidentally into that.
So he doesn't qualify for a license?
He would not qualify.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess, Wade, I'd, I appreciate all the steps that we've went through as far as setting up some of those safeguards to do that. I, I have such a hard time believing that we need more than 67 auto dealers in our community. More, I mean, I understand that it's, at least we're setting up so any future ones would have expectations and different things necessary, but I just still find it absurd that we, as a city of our size, that we need that many, especially compared to our peers, but.
I, I will admit that this is something, and we've had these discussions internally, that there is a need for auto dealers, and I think there will always be a need. It's just a matter of how.
Quantity.
Quantity, how they're laid out.
Right.
And the market's changed, I mean, people aren't necessarily driving by the cars or along the street anymore. I mean, they're looking online, then going to the dealership.
Right, so.
And so having something that looks nice on the outside is important too. I mean, ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the people that live in Sioux City are going to drive by these places, and they will never step side, inside any of these establishments. But the, it's really the outside front door of the establishment.
So how many acres do they have to have if I wanted to get a new, a used car lot today?
By right, it would be a one acre.
One acre?
Yes. And that was, when we previously went through this, we initially had brought the two-acre lot size. We did pull that back to one. You could get a half an acre with a conditional use permit, so that there is the possibility of that too.
So if we let the moratorium expire, it's one acre?
Would be, by right. And it would have to be appropriately zoned.
And it would have to have different, yeah.
I have to meet all the standards.
All the standards.
Anyone to be heard?
Well, what's going to happen if we vote no?
I believe the language of the original moratorium had a six-month sunset.
So we would just need to extend or?
You would, yeah, you would need to give us direction to extend if that's what you want to do.
I was going to say, I would be in favor of extending, but I don't know how to do that. If I need to vote no on this and then offer staff an option, or what would you prefer, Nicole?
I think direction would have to be given for staff to bring it back with that proposed for the council's consideration.
So right now, when we vote yes, it means whatever you guys came up with, that I didn't like, but it's better than nothing, it, it go, it goes into effect if three people vote for it, correct?
Correct. Because it would take away the, it would repeal the moratorium. So yes, then it would go, fall back to those stipulations.
All right. Public hearings now closed.
So voted up or down, and based off of that, I suppose, then we determine whether or not we can ask staff for, to bring it back?
If you want, if, if you want us to bring it back in, in a longer form context, we could do that by direction.
Well, we'll see how we vote. Did mine take? It did? It passes three zero, I won't ask to waive the rules because it's obvious we wouldn't get that, so we'll move on to. Yeah, three to two, I'm sorry. Listen, South Sioux has a complete moratorium, but I don't want to, if we're going to do a moratorium on car lots, then let's do a moratorium. Let's just do what they did. Let's don't do it six-month increments. Nobody can plan in their life in six months. You've got to either do it or don't do it, is where I'm at. So nineteen is a hearing in ordinance rezoning 4100 West Street. The petitioner is Catherine Flaffel. The motion is requested to defer this item till December 2nd, 2024. I'll move that.
Second.
I'll call this one. Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Twenty is a resolution approving the final plat of the Farrell Edition on property at 4100 West Street. Petitioner is Kathy, Catherine Flaffel. Motion needed to defer this item to December 2nd, 2024. I'll move that.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Twenty wants a hearing and resolution approving the plans and specs for the Tyson Event Center roof replacement project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty-two is a hearing and resolution approving the plans and specs for the Cone Park Destination Patio Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Coon. I live at 4700 Gray Hawk Ridge Drive. I'm interested in, tangent, Sergeant Bluff has completed their, well, they're almost complete with their bike path. Sioux City's working on from Green Valley up to Sergeant Bluffs. But I was wondering, besides when it's going to be complete, how are they going to connect that to Cone Park?
Matt?
That's all I wanted, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. This guy knows better than us.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. There, it's going to be a sidewalk connection for the time being in that residential area to get to the corner of Singing Hills Boulevard. And there about a block from there, where access, you can access the Sertoman Park Trail, and that gets you all the way to Cone Park. We had another connection planned to get all the way to Cone Park, it just didn't come to fruition. Maybe someday.
How soon, when, is this phase going to be done?
The paving will be done this year. Vegetation and punch list items will be complete in the spring.
Did we leave it open then, Matt, so that it can curve or switch to go back to that other route? Or that there might be a different route, just so we don't have to use residential sidewalk necessarily in the future? We can kind of curve down to that?
I would love to see the other connection happen someday, but it would include private property, so we'll see how things progress.
Yeah.
With that idea.
That makes sense.
Question, sir?
Yes, yes, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else be heard? Hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-three is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center for the lease of the property at 900 Lewis Park, Lewis Park Road. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Larson. Larson Park Road.
Chris Larson Park Road, what did I say? Oh, Larson Park Road, it, it was Chris Larson, but anyway. Just not old enough to remember that. He was the DOT commissioner that got the interstate through Sioux City in 1962, if you want to do a little history lesson. Passes five zero. Twenty-four is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the sidewalk ramp project. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-five is a hearing and resolution designating an area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number one to the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Project Area Intersection Improvements at Tribune Avenue and Hamilton Boulevard. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. We discussed this earlier today, and you guys have a lot of discussion to go, so hopefully we don't get too carried away with this until we know that some of these improvements are actually needed. We just don't go spend money right away and hope that the traffic builds for that, so. Anyone to be heard? Public hearing is now closed. Passes five zero, Downtown Partners Quarterly Report.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thanks for having us again this year. We do a quarterly update for you guys, so I'm going to run this real fast up here on the screen, and we'll get started. Reagan Cody, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. And behind me, I have Tracy and Liz, who are on staff. Tracy's our Business Development Coordinator, and Liz is our newly appointed Events Coordinator. She's part-time. We also have some board members in the room, so I will get our list up here, if you can put it on the screen for me. I'm like, unless I need to see, I don't really want to see myself. This year, as of July 1st, it starts our fiscal year. It also starts a new year for some board members and a new executive committee. This year, we have Matt Rixner as our president with Mercy One. We have Brianna Eaton, she's with Kari Huff Law Firm, and Nicole Burner is still our treasurer with Security National Bank. New board members include Jeff Hansen with McClure Engineering, who some of you are very familiar with. Mark Prosser, he is a representative of our resident group. He lives at the Fourth and Jackson Condo Association Group. And then Mark Hines, also a name you might remember. He was a board member some time ago on the Downtown Partners Board, and so Mark is back with us as well. So happy to have them on board, and that's our list of, of the team for the year. Just a quick look at expenses, we're only three months into the year, but just kind of wanted to show what we've done over time. So things that we work on in these funds that we might have available, where they would have came from, which year, and we can identify which projects and things like that. And then also on the right is just a look at how our budget is broken out every year and how much we spend on projects and percentages of, of budget. We've had a big couple months since we've been back. We do it quarterly, so we've only had a couple months on yet, but we did a couple things new this last quarter. Rise and dine was a thing that we started, the Successive Restaurant Week, which is our wonderful pictures off there to the right, which Tracy just had to include. No, but Rise and Dine is focusing on brunch. We get a lot of questions sometimes about the brunch options in downtown. So that weekend, we highlighted brunch options for Sioux City and had a great response. So we had 11 restaurants participate in that. In the slide next to it, that circle, we've got some new downtown swag. The purple thing you see there is a dog bag for our residents to help keep our green spaces clean. And then the clear bag for the policies that we have at the Orpheum and the Tyson Center, along with a fan, because it was the summer, so it was very hot. So the other things that we've been working on is a construction socks campaign. This is just one of the pieces that we put up, and we appreciate, I guess the public really appreciated some of the comments we got back from this. Just kind of a play on some of the construction that you're going to see downtown. We've got years of infrastructure work ahead of us, so it just kind of makes light a little bit of some of the things that we've got going on. But also at the same time, it draws attention and it does bring them to information on the projects, so they know how they're going, and they know when they're going to end, and so things that we can get them information on. We're currently going through several groups. City Staff is one of them, but Active Transportation and a lot of others, talking through the possibility of bike lanes in downtown and showing them renderings that McClure Engineering has done for block by block on Fifth and Sixth Street with possible bike lanes to be included. This will go to the Chambers Transportation Committee and some others as we gather feedback and residents, and doing a lot of gathering at this point to see if a demonstration project could be done for the next year. And over on the right, you'll see our new arts and theater banners. We've put some banners up in downtown along some of the, what we call Cobra Head poles. We were doing the arts and theater districts. Some of our poles are older, so we had to adjust and move and shift, as my board is fully aware, but they are up and they're functional. Roughly 34 of them are up now, and you'll find them on Pierce, Nebraska, and mainly Third Streets. The other projects that we have going on that are not up here right now is outdoor music. I've talked about that one before. That is in the progress of, in the next couple weeks, that should be up along the Convention Center area. This is outdoor music that will be basically monitored through Pandora Systems, so it is a friendly, we have the rights to music and things like that, that we can play outside at a decibel level that we choose. Holiday music, different things that we can choose from, so we're kind of excited about that one. And some more lighting. We're going to look at how we can install lighting within the skywalks, not just underneath. So the first bridge that we're going to approach is the one between the Central Bank and the Ho Chong Center along Nebraska Street. It's the most visible from the interstate, and if we can get that one lit and attraction, you know, from the interstate and different things that you can see lit up, that's going to be our test run, so we'll see how that goes. They will have RGBW lights in them, so you can change to multiple, multiple colors. A little bit on our storefront grant and update on how those programs are going. We have had 52 storefront grant applications and funded since 2018. Total project costs are half a million dollars, and the grants awarded for those are over 120,000. Rent relief just started in 2022. Overall, those, I say project costs, but their rents are over 100,000, and we have donated 12,000, and then the property owner does match what we put in to reduce the rent for the new businesses coming into downtown. It's been a popular program, but we hope to see more new businesses, so it is a, an incentive that we like to offer. And the biggie that we are all loving right now is happy holidays. Downtown for the holidays is on Monday, November 25th. We will have the trolley ready for you, everyone, for the parade, so I hope you're going to plan on attending. But we've also got a lot of other things around the holidays for everyone. A lot of people are jumping on board, a lot of businesses and organizations. At 3:00 that day, we have several downtown open houses, businesses that are opening up their doors to not only provide something for the kids to do in between the holiday parade and, and school, there's a lot of anxious energy there, so they can kind of run that off at Launchpad. But also some of our other businesses on the parade route and other areas, if you want to park early and get out, they're going around and doing hot chocolate, hot cider, different things to just walk in the door and see what we've got downtown. That QR code will take you to a list of everything that everyone is offering. At 6:15, the parade kicks off. New this year, we've worked with the Convention Center and the Sulan District Health Department. They are offering an accessible viewing area for those who may not be able to stand, so people do not stand in front of them during the parade to grab candy. And also inside a sensory area for those who may get overstimulated during the parade. Angela is great about providing the necessities for, for that room, for a quiet zone for those kids who might get, get overstimulated. And then Santa lights the tree and travels to RE/MAX, where the kids get to see him after the parade. So this year is a, this is a record-breaking year. At this point, we now have 89 entries in the parade, so expect a night of lots of lights and lots of fun. So it's going to be, so far, I'm knocking on wood, the weather looks amazing. It looks like 40 degrees that day, and so we are going to have a long parade. So I know we get the question a lot, like, when is Santa actually going to get to the tree? With that amount, I can roughly estimate that he'll be there by 7:30, so that might give people another option to get there. But please, leave yourselves time to park, and we'll get some things out on social media, also kind of alerting you to anything else or anything changing and where to park for the parade. The other piece to the holidays is our storefront decorating competition. This is wonderful for us because it does help us decorate downtown. There are 21 storefronts participating this year. Six of them are nonprofits coming into downtown to take over vacant spaces, to decorate those for the holidays. And thanks to RE/MAX Experience, we offer $500 to the local nonprofit that wins the public vote during the season. So they go on and they pick profit, they not, the nonprofit that they want the funds to go to, and then everyone votes through the holiday season. So they go on and they pick profit, they not, the nonprofit that they want the funds to go to, and then everyone votes through the holiday season. New thing that we started this year is Destination Downtown. This is in lieu of Saturday, November thirtieth, when we ask everyone to shop small. This is Small Business Saturday. Destination Downtown gives you a look into what our businesses downtown offer. We're highlighting all of the businesses that we have retail establishments for and to kind of give you an idea of what there is available downtown, so please shop small. The other thing we've got this year is twelve days of giveaways. Everyone loves free stuff. So December first through the twelfth, we have come up, the theme this year is gonna be Christmas movies. And yes, the ever controversial diehard, is it a Christmas movie? We're going to do it anyway. But these gifts will be, every day, it will be centered around a movie, so the gift packs that you get will be from downtown vendors and local businesses putting those things together for us. So please follow Facebook for more information on that. And that is all I have for you today.
I feel seen. Thank you.
Okay.
Could be on the list.
You know, Reagan, the, the three o'clock family events that are being held during the parade is, that, that's really great. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and thank you to our businesses. They want to do more, so that's a great way to get them involved.
I see the Launchpad is involved, the Sioux City Library is involved.
Yes. Yeah, that's great. Any other?
I feel like you need a mic drop moment, but I don't think you should.
No.
That was really good. Every, every time that you come, there's always something new that I'm really excited to hear about. The music, I think we're all a little bit excited for. I know initially, when you said that, you teased the possibility that people could submit songs. And I will just tell you, I told my students about that, and they were like, don't do that. That would be bad. So that, that's the feedback from the high school.
So you're telling me not to listen to you as?
Don't, don't let people pick songs to play. That, I, I like that you, you have that, that foresight about like the, the people that might, the sensory, you know, loud fire engines going by and things like that, needing a quiet space to kind of step away from the parade. Very thoughtful. It's very exciting.
Yeah. We don't want you to avoid the parade, just because.
Nice job. Great work.
Any citizen want to be heard? Please come to the microphone, state your name, please. Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. O'Kane.
Three short things. Number one, a quick shout-out and thank you, of course, to the Sioux City Police Department, who we relied on at West High again after school, as there's an altercation in the parking lot after school hours. So thank you for their speedy response. They mobilized quickly and, and they helped make sure that it didn't escalate and, and things were under control. So as usual, they did a great job, and the response time was fast. I received like three compliments about the roundabout, which is just the strangest thing, because I didn't hear a lot of compliments leading up to it opening. But I did, I did actually have three separate people say that they, they took it and they enjoyed it, and I know that's very controversial to say, but I figured I better put that out there. I used it once myself, and I'm still here, and I'm alive. It was successful.
You didn't just keep driving in circles?
I didn't keep driving in circles. No, no.
Just got stuck, yeah.
The only other thing I wanted to-
Gravitational pull.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up is, is kind of ended on a sad note or a concern, and that was with the regards to election night. And I'm not gonna talk about the election results or how elections went. I'm gonna talk about being able to reach across the aisle and, and for people to kind of, for a long time, the ceremony has been, if, if you were on the ticket, you're at the courthouse, and everybody watches the results come in together. And then, at the end of it, if, if you lost or if you win, the one thing you can count on is a handshake from whoever you were running against. And on election night, I went down to the courthouse. And there was nobody there that was, and that was really sad to see. Everybody had their own private parties, which I know has become the trend within the past couple of years. But if, if you can't reach across for a handshake after winning or losing a race, how can you reach across the aisle? And if you're considering running for public office, I would strongly recommend you really ponder that and think about that. If we can't share a common space to find out who won, then, then what are you doing it for? If you're not there to work with somebody else in the end, so. That was just a disappointing thing to experience, and that's everything.
Matthew kind of stole my topic. Mostly, we've seen a lot of negative comments about the roundabout, just because I think people don't understand the project. I mean, they see the big numbers, engineer estimates on what the project's going to cost. The roundabout has been kind of the focus on the project, but the project really is a street and curbs and gutters and infrastructure and many more things than just the actual circle that created that roundabout. So I just wanted to, one more time, clarify that. The roundabout was not the entirety of the project. So the big number that you saw, Gordon, correct me, was it one point seven million was the engineer's estimate?
One point six.
One point four million was the engineer's estimate. The roundabout did not cost one point four. I've seen five million, I've seen two million. I've seen a lot of crazy numbers, but for the record, it was estimated that it cost up to ninety thousand dollars more, right in that ballpark. So that saves signals, lighting, all kinds of other things, but I'm just saying, for the record.
Not to mention safety.
Yes, safety, emissions from people stopping at signals, all kinds of different things. So it, it's time to get a roundabout where it was needed in the community. It was designed and thought up by the county engineer, and the city partnered with them to make the project complete. With that being said, let's move on. We have some openings on our boards, committees, commissions. For those who are concerned about these types of things, decisions made, and you'd like to have your opinions weighed and counted before all the projects come through, please go online, get on a committee. It's fun. Everybody who's, you know, applying to be on again seems to really be enjoying them. We're each on plenty of committees and commissions, all of us, and I thoroughly enjoy them, so please join. Be involved, be ready for our holiday parade next year or next Monday. The more community focus that we have and the more time we spend together, I think the better of a community that we're going to have. So with that being said, I'm-
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I would just share, I, recently, I had, late last week, go over to Cedar Rapids for a conference and was able to visit and talk with some of their different developers and developments that they have going on. I thought it was interesting. I wasn't gonna talk about the roundabout, because I think it's ready to move on, but I did find it interesting. They actually, Cedar Rapids has multiple roundabouts, right in their downtown even, so just being able to get around, it's just interesting. Almost every city I go to seems that they have implemented them, and I'm, I'm sure they had some difficulty as well. But the other thing that I just wanted to bring up is, I understand, I've had multiple conversations now and some meetings downtown with different various individuals with concerns addressing homelessness and different populations. Just growing concerns, especially, I understand, as it gets colder, maybe these individuals are more seen or acting more aggressive. I will tell you that last night, I, it was bothering me, and I was contacted by a constituent, a local business owner downtown. And so I wanted to take a drive and see how things were going myself. And I will say that I drove all over for probably an hour to a lot of different areas, and I just, more than anything, I want to give kudos to our staff. I think that our staff has done a good job talking about various resources that are available. I know that there was one area in particular off of the exit of Wesley Parkway, the on and off ramp there. And I know that city staff went to great lengths to clean that area up, and I really appreciate that, and their efforts overall, both volunteers as well as staff, to clean up some of the garbage in our downtown that maybe they're finding on the sides of the roads or the sidewalks. So I thank them for that, but also our police presence. I didn't see a great deal of activity. Yes, you know, there were individuals finding themselves walking to the Warming Shelter or different areas, but more than anything, I saw a lot of law enforcement presence. I couldn't go three blocks without seeing, you know, a law enforcement officer drive by or just on patrol. And so I think that there are steps we're trying to take. I'm hopeful. I reached out to the Executive Director of the Warming Shelter just saying that I wanted to continue the conversation, hear how those kind of joint meetings were taking place, where they're actually bringing multiple community partners and organizations together to see how they're progressing on that, how they're able to utilize both our donations, but also community donations that went in and just see what progress is being made so that at least the council and the community can be kept abreast about what's happening and how we're, how we're addressing some of this thing, these things. Because other communities have had to take drastic measures, and I certainly want to take a more compassionate route, but I also understand the desire for people to feel safe in their downtown and certainly my desire to continue to have thriving businesses in our downtown. So I think it's, it's something we need to find that balance, and it's something that I certainly am committed to the conversation of continuing. So that's all I wanted to bring up, Mayor.
Okay, Dan?
A few things. First of all, I want to thank all of our citizens that participated in the Veterans Day events that occurred on November eleventh. The Veterans Commission at the courthouse, outstanding celebration and remembrance of our service people. Zain Schwirka did just an outstanding job making a presentation. I also want to thank the Junior ROTC for the event that they sponsored as well on Veterans Day. It was very meaningful. Reagan, I want to thank you again. I read in the Sioux City Journal that the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, the Local Two Thirty-One, for the parade next Monday, they were very complimentary of the help they had from Downtown Partners. And it just shows the community that when you put Downtown Partners together with the, the Local Two Thirty-One for a parade that's probably, I don't even know what year this would be for that parade or for the Santa thing. I think it's gotta be around thirty years or thirty-five years? Yeah, for thirty-five years. It, it just shows that the teamwork works, and, and I appreciate how organized that is. And I appreciate all the work that Local Two Thirty-One does to make this possible for our community. This Thursday, the mayor and I will be attending the Northwest Iowa League of Cities meeting. It's a, it's an auction night where we have auction items from Sioux City. We proudly display them. They usually bring some good money in for scholarships for the, is it high school?
Mm-hmm. College.
For college kids going to, going to college that want to be in public service, so we'll be attending that. And then I think, I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
We adjourn. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye. Did you get anything from Mardo? I mean, you live down there.